Good. Oh, Becky, I have a badge.
Oh, I have a badge, thank you.
And I have one for you, but I need to know what color you want, and I forgot to bring them in. So I'll get it, okay. Go.
Hey, the August meeting of the Board of Trustees of the City of Ocean Shores Library is called to order. At a forum. Maybe we have approval of the meeting agenda.
I'm moved that we approved the meeting agenda for today.
Okay, we have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Do we have any public communications?
We call to have any.
I didn't get any via email, no.
I don't remember these screens.
Unless anybody's online.
Don's online.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of the June 12th meeting.
We can do it here. It's all.
There's something to do with, I haven't seen.
The whole question, that makes sense. I'm going to approve the minutes of the June 12th meeting.
We have a second?
I guess I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. The library directors need work.
Here. I just wanted a few things today. We have hired two new staff members. One is David Bernard and the other is Hannah Rayberg. They're both fill our six slots of staff at the library. They both will be sixty-nine hours per month. And what's very exciting about these kids is, and they are kids, is they both have masters in library science degrees from accredited universities. Hannah is from the University of Washington and David is from the University of Arizona. So I am tickled pink because that's huge. And to cap it all off, Nick, who's been with us for quite a few years now, is starting his masters in library science in a couple of weeks at the University of San Jose. So that's just really exciting. As usual, there's lots of programs and events going on at the library. We have a pretty full agenda today, so I'm not going to read the litany of things that are going on. But you know, the calendar events is always available in the library and always available online. So you can find out what's going on and you can always call me. And I think that's, oh, there is one other piece of housekeeping business that we need to do. As you know, we filled your, our open vacancy position. And Alex has agreed to stay on in the position of secretary with the board. And Jeff has agreed to stay on in the position of president with the board. And we just won't have a vice president. In the library bylaws, which is in your notebook, there's sentence that says that we elect officers in January. So we'll let all of the new people get their feet wet and then we'll reelect officers, which would be president, vice president, and secretary in January. Thank you both, Alex and Jeff, for doing it. But we have one other piece of business in line with that is we, as a board, kind of oversee library in general. You are a governing board. And we have people that attend the other boards' meetings. And we have a foundation and we have a friends of the library. So right now, Vicki, who is off on medical, is the foundation's liaison from the boards. But we need somebody to be the friends of the library liaison. And they meet once a month. And it's probably about an hour, two, an hour and a half meeting. And all you do is you go, you sit, take notes, and you might explain to the friends what the board is doing. Then then come back here and explain to us what the friends are doing. Anybody interested?
Depends on when the meetings are.
It's the second Monday in the afternoon of each month, except for December. A party in December.
Yes.
I need to, I see, but it's.
You think? You've been around five minutes, Leon.
You're a veteran.
Would you like to start doing it?
I could certainly give it a try, see if nobody else is interested.
Yeah, let's see, Vicki is doing the foundation, so, so, okay. All right, I will put you down for that and we can talk more about that.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Excellent, excellent. All business, council meeting presentations.
I have an update on that. I have been asked by council for me do the presentations. And I said, I will, but I'm going to go quarterly. I'm going to go when there's big, big events, like when Santa's coming or, you know, something, our summer reading programs, whatever. So for right now, we're going to suspend those. And what that was is one person from the board would go to council and have ten, fifteen minutes and just explain what was going on with the library program wise. So I think they want more library information. So I will be doing that. I am not going to be able to do the twenty-seventh, but I will get something worked up and I don't mind going. I like talking, so. Alex, is that okay with you?
It is, but to clarify, we are not going to do the board presentations. You are substituting that?
I'm taking it over.
You're taking it over, okay, and you're doing it on September twenty-fourth?
I'm not going to do the twenty. I'm not, I'm not going to do the twenty-seventh. I'll probably do something in September because I want to get it started. So.
Okay.
Taking minutes, right? You're taking minutes.
Perfect. I am, and that's great.
I meant to ask that earlier. And then, you know, there might be something. Back up a little bit, we need to be flexible. There might be something where I want word to come and talk. So that it may happen, it just doesn't need to happen so repetitively, each, you know, one time each month. So, and we'll see, and maybe we want to go back to the way we were, who knows? But I've been asked to change that right now, and so that's what we're going to accommodate. You got it, Alex?
I got it, thank you.
New business, Board of Directors vacancy.
We don't have one.
Leon.
That's my brain.
Welcome, Leon.
Trustees email account.
Right, we had two other obvious Board of Trustees that monitored the email account, and one of them is still Jeff that monitors it. And the other one has resigned from the board. So we need one other person, so when he's down watching ballgames, we can have the account checked. So I need somebody to volunteer to check the email account for the board. And then Jeff will have to get together with whoever volunteers and we'll change the password for that too. And then if you're not comfortable with checking email, we can get Nick to help us set it up for you.
He sets it up really good. And it's, I've got it on my phone and I literally just changed the address that I'm looking for in Gmail, and there it is.
Good. And for you, you folks, we have little business cards that have the email on there. And this is so, you know, people have a concern, they want to shoot the board an email, what do you think about? You know, why are you doing this, you know, anything that we can capture. So. And I did look, and I just, so you did too, we didn't have anything. So, so who would like to help Jeff monitor this?
I don't know, yeah, check the question.
Sure.
What would you, you know, check? Only when something comes in. Really, so.
I checked the, the library Gmail account or, and then the, this external one a couple of times a day because it's, I got it on my phone, I mean, sitting in my chair, it takes no time whatsoever to do it. So, and I even done it while I was at a ballgame at the end in Denver. My kids were a little freaked out about that. Why are you doing work that? So it's, it's no big deal, and if we got something, I would immediately alert Keita.
Yes, so that would be my question, what types of things come in and then how would we? What's the process for?
We've had zero.
Yeah, never had one.
So we don't want to have that.
Because nothing's.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's, that's something that has been in the back of my mind is that word protocol. We do need to have a process. What we do, who handles it, do you respond right away? Do you take it back to the next meeting? You know, and we do not have that in place. So we probably should get that on that future agenda.
Somebody like me who doesn't know a lot about what's happening, a response. Thank you for your concern, we'll get back to you as soon as I can.
Yeah. Yes. You're doing it, okay. Thank you. I will get with Nick to help me change the password on that, I'm sure it's just under my account. And then Jeff, I'll let you choose a password.
Okay.
We'll go with that.
Yeah, just let me know. Because I'll probably have to have Nick do it because.
Okay.
And do the last one. He did an excellent job.
Yeah, so if you need help, Nick's fabulous, he's fabulous. Okay, so I think we've completed that.
Yep. Policy ten amendments.
Okay, so if you turn into your packets, policy ten is the meeting room policy. And the board reviews the policies in whole once a year. And they're all online on the library webpage and they're all on the city webpage. And there's a table of contents that, you know, we have for the policies. And what's become apparent is we needed to change the meeting room policy on page nine of your packet. The second to last paragraph where it says, "Meeting room users must complete a new agreement." Anybody see that? I don't think you have that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll share with you. And what we simply need to do is change the meeting room user must complete a new agreement from October first to September first. We have over a hundred and twelve uses in this room a month. And we've got to get our email renewal letters out and we can't wait till October. People are asking and booking now for twenty-five. So I need a motion and a hopeful approval to change that, and I will update it and update the table of contents and get it to Sarah and the webmaster.
So moved. I'll second.
Okay.
So to clarify, I'm sorry, sometimes I miss some things being on Zoom, I apologize. It's will say, "Meeting room users must complete a new agreement reservation from October first to September first?"
No, it'll say, "Meeting room users must complete a new agreement slash reservation for the following calendar year, starting on September one."
Okay.
That's because we just need more time.
Okay.
You good with it?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved and passed.
And then the next one is policy eleven. And policy eleven deals with display and distribution. And because, because we have that glorious electronic reader board out there, I needed some policies and guidelines for that. So on policy eleven, thank you for sharing. At the top, I'm going to add policy slash distribution and then underneath it, electronic reader board. And then on the very first line where it says policy eleven dot O, it will read policy, comma, distribution of free materials, comma, electronic reader board. And then at the back on policy eleven point six, I sent you a draft, the words I thought would cover it, except there's one change I have after I set that up. So eleven point six would basically say, electronic reader board. The use of the electronic reader board, no S, is to promote library programs and library services. The electronic reader board may not be used to promote or advertise meetings, events taking place in the library meeting rooms or community events. The electronic reader board is not available for promotion of private businesses, for the sale of goods or services, or political campaigns signs. So I need to know if that wording is acceptable to you.
So I had a question.
Yeah.
I noticed that currently it, there is a notification about the burn ban. And then, you know, isn't necessarily the library, but could there be something in here that says important community or? I don't know how you would want to word that, but this feels more restrictive than what's actually.
That would be the only one I would put on. Unless it was something, the tsunami's coming, you know.
She makes a good point, I told Nick, it's from the children.
Right. In the very first line of the very first paragraph of the entire policy, the last sentence says, "The library director has the authority to select or reject requests for display."
That's great, so. Authority to, yeah. Do that, perfect.
Other comments? Any comments, Alex?
I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that you have the freedom to advertise the burn ban. And I want to make sure that the last paragraphs that you added do not limit that. Should we specifically say, except for the burn ban or, or, or does this feel like it allows you to do that?
I think that very first paragraph where it says, "I have the authority to accept or reject," gives a blanket cover.
Okay.
In my head.
I don't think we need to limit it, but you specifying anything or excluding anything, I think just that you have the authority, that, that takes care of it.
I hate to words with you, could it be the library director has the authority to select or reject any request for supply for?
Yeah, I can put any.
Yeah.
This is, any request?
Yeah, I like that.
All requests, yes. Something to that. What'd you say, Alex?
Yeah, I like that.
Do you like any or all?
Any.
Any? Okay, I'll make that change here too. Thank you, Becky. And you know, if something comes up and I'm not comfortable with it, I don't make decisions linearly. Linearly. Is that a word? Unilaterally? Unilaterally, whatever. I will bring it to the board and say, hey, what do you think of this? So, okay, I do that with my staff, I, we all work together.
We have a motion to accept the changes? So. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ask.
Yeah, now my work's great. Okay. And for those of you that are new, I'm sure Vicki was here. We do have a, this is the written agreement that we use for the meeting room. And we keep this on file for a year, and then this is what we update every year. For the meeting room, so. It's a good system, it works pretty smooth. Okay, now onto the biggie of the day. Budget. I have a handout. I, I have a handout to that. Oh, did I? Yeah, I have another one though, I updated that one. Because I have news. Sorry, Alex, I didn't think to send this to you this morning after you told me you weren't coming last night. I will read it to, I can't hear you. Can't hear you. I'm mute. I'm mute. There was a video. Don't turn yourself off, Alex. Okay, so this is the latest, greatest budget. It's a two-year budget. Yep, this is the latest updated. And the city puts out a timeline that we have to follow and we have that. And then I will be taking this budget, if you approve it today, to the city council on September tenth and present it to them. They, this makes them aware of what we're doing, what everybody is asking for, what the departments are asking for. And get an overview picture of how the whole city looks as a budget. They then convene many times and take and give and take and give. And the final vote is usually right before Christmas, if we're lucky. So this is what I have done. I took the twenty-three, twenty-four copy, which is, looks like this, but you do have in your notebooks. And I added a cost of living onto that. And that's how I came up with the numbers. And what you are looking at here is the top line says, "Library budget proposal." That was my first start on this. And then you will see salary and benefits, I don't do those. Finance department does all of those and they present all that, that part, that's, I'm operating. This is the operating budget for the library for two years. So then we have different departments in the budget. One is called thirty-one is office. Thirty-four is books and so on, thirty-five, small tools and equipment. So I took the constant living numbers and plugged them in there. And then, because the mayor is fairly new as a mayor, he's only been in, what, six, seven, eight months. I listed just a few things in each of the categories that come out of that budget. So you had a feeling of what it's for. And he was real impressed with that. And he said, "When you talk to council, tell them, tell them what you do, tell them how many checkouts you have, you know. Give them a broad picture of what the library is." So that's how I'm going to present this to council. And so then I met with Sarah, the city clerk, and Frank, the mayor, on the fifth, that's the second line at the top. And the red were the comments that he made to this budget. And then I met with him again on the seventh, and the green are those comments. So I want to just walk you through it real quick. Office is basically office supplies. Next to the books and materials, it's one I use quite a bit. Because it's where, you know, everything comes out of. And just to give you an idea, is we have to buy those little spine labels. Well, they're eight hundred, and this is two years. The twenty-four, one, two, six is a two-year total. So this book labels are four hundred a year, just keep that in mind. And eight cartridges, we spent almost ten thousand dollars. And the mayor said, "Oh, that's too much, you need to go to Sunset Ship and Print and get all your flyers printed then." Because we do a lot of printing, a lot of printing. We do at least, well, we do a monthly calendar and at least ten other pieces of printed advertising a month. It's huge. And so I called Sunset Ship and Print and to come find out, they're three times more than what the cost of these cartridges are that I get through a company in Seattle. So I did that, he was very pleased to hear that when we had our second meeting. And then thirty-four books, that's books, audios, DVDs, magazines, newspapers. And then it also includes things that aren't your typical hard copy book or audio book. So it includes the overdrive, and that's where you can download an audio book or download a book or download a magazine to read on your device. And that is seven hundred and sixteen dollars, right there. Seven thousand, one hundred and sixteen. Ebsco is our magazine subscription vendor, twenty-four hundred. News Bank is an online newspaper vendor that you can actually log in and read many newspapers, like the Olympian, the Seattle Times, and so on, like you're holding it in your hand, flipping the page. It's all in there, in color. So it's fabulous. Daily World is the local paper. And then Canopy is the movies that you can download to watch on your device or TV. Thirty-five Small Tools, he thought that was way too high. I said, okay, so I adjusted it down fourteen thousand. Then, if you switch to the next page and under strong priority additional, where it's the bottom of the next page, the one thing I really have wanted for the fourteen and a half years I've been here are paid pages. And pages are the people that put the books back in proper order, all the materials back. They not only shelved, but they shelved read to make sure it's in accurate order. They shift the books, which is very physical. I've been doing this for fifty years, and this is the first library I've ever been at that did not have a page. Not one. They're all volunteers. And due to our demographics in this town, most of them are over sixty. And it's not a job for, because you're bending, you're lifting, you're pushing, you're pushing these big heavy carts. So Frank said, "I'll consider it," at our first meeting. What I asked for was four pages for four hours a week. And I used twenty-two seventy as a salary because I didn't know what the minimum wage was and I wasn't sure that was appropriate. And he said, "I'll consider it and we'll see." Well, that's when he came back to me on the seventh and said, "If you can get rid of sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-some dollars, six, sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars, I will give you two pages, five days a week or two hours a day." I was dancing in circles. So I went to the Small Tools and Equipment, which is basically, I looked it up, what we spent. It's things like periodical covers, you know, kind of one-shot, big buys, you know, they cost a thousand dollars. Or those ballards, there's pillars in front of the sign to keep people from running into the electronic reader board. Those, those cost a couple thousand dollars. Or chairs, I frequently have to buy, you know, new chairs for staff at the service. Things like that that are necessary, but there may be other ways to get them provided. So I took that thirty-five budget line and I adjusted the, I did fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty. And it came out to eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. So Small Tools and Equipment will be eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. And as I noted here, it's, it's very doable to have this in this budget. And to get to the other part of the sixteen thousand under number forty-nine, which is the last thing on page two for the departments, I adjusted the thousand fifty-five to zero because I wanted to have the pages, that it's the extreme high priority for me. And then I made a note that the Ocean Shores Library Foundation is sending six of us to the Washington Library Association Annual Conference next year. And that's going to be like seven thousand dollars, easy. So they're supporting training dues and subscriptions generously. So that's how I came up with the sixteen thousand to get the pages. The pages will not be reflected under my budget, they'll come out of Sarah and Finance Department's Personnel Budget. You know, the salaries and benefits, that's not, not what I do, so she will report on those. So going back to the departments, then on top of page two, we have forty-five, which is operating leases. This includes our alarm monitoring system. And it includes a software package called Cassie, which helps people sign up and use the thirteen public PCs in the library. Forty-seven is utilities, but that also includes Verizon phone. And it also includes Coast TV, which we subscribe to. And then forty-eight is repairs and maintenance. We have a contract with Advanced Heating we've had for years. And we have four maintenances to a year for two thousand dollars. And then when we remodeled five years ago, we put in those cell sanitizer things of, you know, makes the air cleaner, I can't remember what they're called, sanitizers, something.
Filters.
Filters, yeah. And you have to replace those every few years. So we have to do that in twenty-six and it'll be into twelve hundred dollars. And then last year I had a new water fountain put in and it reached its filter. And then last year, I had a new water fountain put in, and it reached its filtering level, and I had the filter replaced. I thought, eh, you know, a hundred bucks. That was four hundred dollars, and something, and I went for a filter. So I put that in the budget, too. So that's basically the budget. Um, it started out on my first draft at two eighty-four. And then after my visit with Frank, first one, that was two seventy-three. And the bottom line now is it's two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, a hundred and two dollars and eighty-eight cents. And it's a good, it's a strong budget. So basically, I'm not asking for any more money for anything at all. So, um, if you go to the next page where I put IT, equipment, potential failures, these would be a couple of things that might come out of that number thirty-five that I cut back, these small tools and equipment. Um, I always put in for a laser printer, 'cause that's a work, workhorse. Everybody that uses the computers prints to it. We all print to it as long as it's really fast. And then, because we do so much color printing, I always put in the current price to replace our color printer in the back room. So, but those are only if they crash. And then Frank is very, very interesting to work with, and I love it. He thinks city-wise, and for so many years, who have been here a long time, everything was that the library took care of security, the library took care of landscaping, the library took care of striking the library parking lot. Well, he thinks city, which is just music to my ears. And so we're working on the possibility of a security system, the silent alarms, the monitoring, the door access for all of our, our buildings, and that's in the works right now. So there may be an added-on charge to this budget for that, but I'm still, I'm still okay with it. 'Cause we have that in, that one where I said it was a hundred and seven dollars a month, the operating leases. So if that changes, we're still covered. Um, striking the parking lot, the city picked it up. They did it last year. I'd like to see it done in twenty-six again. We are a public building. It is extremely, extremely important to me that we look good, that we're kept up, that the weeds are done and everything. So we were paying a landscaper a hundred and forty dollars a month to come out for about a half hour, twice a month, and pull horse tail and weeds. Frank said, "Public Works can do that." So I said, "Yippee." So that, that saved, you know, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred a year. And so I did that right away, and that's in effect now. I canceled the landscaper, so, sorry. And then our building is in desperate need of siding. Our siding has failed, um, and it's bubbling. And so we are on the city's facilities plan, and we will get the siding, uh, repainted, scraped out and repainted sometime soon, but I don't, they haven't come up with a timeline of that, that I know. And then one thing I just wanted to throw out, mostly for Frank, was we do not, as a city, have any emergency procedures in written, and especially for the library. We're a public place. What if a shooter walks in the door? What do we do? What if, you know, there's a snowstorm? What if we have patrons in here, they haven't left yet? You know, none of that has been addressed. What if the power goes out and it's dark? What do you have ready for, you know, all the patrons that are in the back stacks? You know, none, I've had this in my other libraries, written out to the T and crossed. So I wanted the city to come up with some procedures for the city and us that, remember, we're the most public building the city has. You know, you could go into the core, it's a convention center, it gets a lot of use, but they're not six days a week, every week, like we are. So we're only closed on Mondays. And, and, but we're open on Mondays, we have a ton of meetings on Mondays. So the only thing is we're not open for the public, but we are, we do service the community on Mondays. So that's, that's what that line means. And then things I don't want to lose track of is there's a big parking lot light on the south end, and the base is really, really getting rusty. So I went out there and I jiggled it, and it didn't jiggle, so I assume we're okay for a little while. But I like to just keep things noted, you know? And, you know, someday I'm gonna retire, and, you know, at least it'll be noted that, oh, yeah, we gotta do that, so. And then, um, finally, the, there's going to be a need where we're going to need to expand our janitor service from two days a week to three days. Our circulation is climbing every month, and the number of people through the door averages right now about thirty-five a month, an hour. And we get all those people through and using the facilities, and so, um, I don't see it as a need right now. I'd rather have had the pages than this at the moment, but it's one of those I do not want to lose track of either. And then finally, to note, the library will be closed, so staff can attend the Washington Library Congress in Tacoma and will be closed nine through fourteen, maybe ten through twelve. The actual, um, conference runs ten, eleven, and twelve. And since it's only a two-hour drive to Tacoma, we'll probably just be closed ten, eleven, and twelve. And he was, he was fine with that. So I took the numbers and did a summary. And, um, oh, I didn't, where did I put the totals? No, I didn't put the totals on there. Oh, there are totals. I'm gonna put the totals for a minute, someone. Yeah, but if you go down to the next page, I thought I totaled it out. I did, but anyway, I said. So we will have that. So the next step with the budget is discussion here. And then if you're so inclined to approve it, then I will take it to council.
The total from page two, by the way.
Page two. Oh, yeah, twenty-six, two thousand six hundred, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. That's what it is. I know, I put it somewhere. And to get, give you a comparison, two sixty-seven, the twenty-three, twenty-four total was two thousand fifty-two, five, six, five. So two hundred thousand. Two hundred and fifty-two thousand versus two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Still pretty close.
So the only question I have, but I think you've really covered it, so I'm not sure I should. It's necessary, is it looked like, looked like we had already spent quite a bit in the small tools and equipment this year. And, but I understand why you want to use it.
Right. We, we have spent some, but not nearly the max.
Okay.
Yeah. And what it, what it affects is I do a tally each month. Let me show you what I do. And each time I get a bill, it goes on an Excel spreadsheet. And I list. I give it a number. I do an amount. I give it one of the department numbers, thirty-one, thirty-five, and then who it's to and what it's for. And then when the city does their financials, I reconcile it with my sheet, and I put, "Day paid." So I know that it got paid, yeah, you know, exactly where we stand. I typically, every year, almost consistently, keep our budget until October at two and a half percent under where we should be, just in case a window breaks, somebody drives a car through, you know, you just, you never know what's gonna happen. That's how I operate. Then in October, we go through and we add things that we kind of, yeah, we might want to get that, might want to add that, or we might want to stock up on paper. So I never not spend the whole budget. It may come out like two thousand and hundred, but it, it's always spent. And, you know, and, and a team player, too, it's always nice to give it back. So. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it absolutely does. I just didn't want you to unders, you know, underpet yourself, but it sounds like you know exactly what you are, so.
Yeah. I do. Because for so long, the library was not in the general fund for years. And we had a levy that we ran, and every single penny counted in that levy. And I felt very responsible to give this board an exact detail of where it goes. And when we went into the general fund, that was nice, but I still kept doing this. And there have been a few incidences where my budget, the library budget, was charged something we did not buy. And sometimes it's been two or three thousand dollars. And so if I hadn't done this process, it wouldn't have been caught. So I, I will keep doing this, so. It's time-consuming, but it's, it's how we function.
It just seems realistic to me, and, uh, and actually moving toward pages as being part of one force in the library for reasons you described, uh, as the age of ones. The grab, you can not speak for yourself. I understand that, and that actually, in a sense, you're bringing, you're a very good community person by thinking in those terms, uh, both for the library and for those people who love volunteer, or probably shouldn't be doing that kind of work. So I would personally approve your question.
One of the notions when discussing this with the mayor was to hire high school kids, you know? Let them have a early release time, skip sixth or seventh period, whatever the last period is, and come to work at the library. I've done that in my previous positions. And kids, they're fabulous. I mean, they just adapt, they work, looks good on their resume for them, for their future. So that's what we're hoping, and it builds a really strong partnership in the school district.
Yeah.
And I like partnerships. So that's, that's where we're kind of leaving. Yeah.
Back in the nineties, one of my sons worked as a library page.
Oh.
And created a very strong affinity, uh, within him regarding books and information.
A good affinity?
Yes.
Good. Well, one of my branches is King County Library System. I had twenty-seven pages at one time. So they, they're the backbone of the library. And these, you know, granted, I have staff, but we have the meet and greet, people walk in the door. It's, "Hi, how you doing today?" You know? Immediately, I like that. And if they're out shelving books in the back door, how are they gonna get the phone? You know, or how are they gonna greet people, or how are they gonna help people that, you know, need help? And they're busy focusing on, you know, getting this book right in the right order and shifting and moving. So it's just not practical for staff to do it.
Well, um, I think we should consider a motion to approve the proposed budget numbers here.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay.
Becky does.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Keith, and you got your budget.
Yay. Thank you. I'll keep you informed on how it goes, uh, with council and with the salaries. And eventually I will have a formal sheet that looks like this, where it's all broken down. This is a multi-year, but it shows the salaries, the benefits, and all the different departments in the library. So you'll actually see what it is. And again, this will not be approved till mid-December. So. Thank you.
Yeah, honor to your sake. What is the percentage difference over the last, uh, year?
Five percent.
Thank you.
Okay, reports, Friends of the Library.
Gonna turn that over to Alex, 'cause she was there.
Uh, yes. So the Friends of the Library are going strong. They continue to have presentations from different non-profit organizations. And this time, they were talking about, um, surf riders that does a lot of cleaning and trying to recircle, recirculate plastic. Uh, in terms of their own functioning, they are doing well. Uh, they have, uh, purchased for the library some chairs and some additional, uh, programs. And they are growing. They are doing their membership, uh, drive right now. And so if you do not belong to the Friends of the Library, they urge you to consider it, uh, which is part of what funds all of these services. And I think that's all I need to report.
Thank you. Uh, Foundation.
Foundation, I can do that since Vicky is absent. Oh, Alex, be sure and make Vicky an excused absence on the minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, the Foundation is meeting every other month. They successfully have our sign installed, and people are just loving throughout town. I had a comment the other day, "I didn't have to come up to the door and read your hours, 'cause it was right there on the sign when I drove by." Yes. And, um, Nick is one responsible for keeping the sign updated, 'cause we change it daily. And it's just working really smooth. The Foundation now is pursuing a series of financial programs called Let's Talk. And they had one on assisted living homes, and I think fifteen people attended last week. They're having one on estate planning, and they're having one on scams coming up in January. And so it's a series, and also they're doing this to get the word out that the Foundation um, would love some legacy money. People would think to be generous to leave some of their money to the Foundation to support the library, trust them back. Uh, we have a full board. Right now, we have a full board for all three divisions, which is fabulous. So that's what they're working on.
Okay, uh, board report to council.
And Vicky did her spiel, and basically it's what we normally do, Jeff's done, and Alex has done a lot of. Um, she basically just got up and explained the programs that were going on with the library. Went well.
Email account update. Well, zero. Big goose egg.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah. Hey. Uh, next meeting, October ninth at three o'clock here. They have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
All in favor?
Bye.
We are adjourned.
Bye, Alex.